Yeah, right now it's recorded.
Okay.
But see, it just, we'll just, yeah. To be recorded later.
Yeah, the first couple times got.
I was really disappointed with my picture being uploaded. Yeah, I was gonna, oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, you're better take the pictures. I was gonna send it to you and I was gonna try to post it on my computer.
Thank you, everyone, for being patient with our regular, our special meeting that we just had next door. We got everything we were hoping to tonight, but not at your expense, unfortunately. But so I appreciate your willingness to be here and wait for us. We are having a little bit of trouble with the video on our recording tonight, so for those that might be listening at home, we are, hopefully it's recording and you're hearing us, but the video is still in and out. Our first item up tonight is the Historic Preservation Commission update goals and discussion points, and I will ask our planner, too, Eric Sampson, who's present here to discuss this with us, and anyone else from the board they will want to bring up, which is our newest Boarding Commission. It's great to have an update in this one.
Hi.
Hi.
So, we do have three members of our HPC here this evening to talk about projects that we've been working on over the past year and just kind of give you a pre-overview of those projects and what to expect in the future.
Great. Can you have your folks introduce themselves, too?
Absolutely.
Hi, my name is Lauren Cooper. I am the former Chair of the Commission. I was Chair for the first two years of Commission until about two weeks ago.
Thank you for serving in that role.
Matthew Crabtree, served on the Commission.
CJ Kellman, served on the Commission.
Great, thank you.
And also, we do have other members with us, Kathy Parker and Jason O'Brien, other members.
Ten million dollars.
Thank you for being here and for the way we got this thing off from. Oh, oh, are you really taking that down?
No, just for the meeting.
Okay, listen, so there's a symbol behind it, because tape names a lot to it. Sorry, symbol. If you don't mind, some of us will be eating, which we normally do before you all come. We've been here since five, and some of us have to eat. Twenty-one.
One hundred and fifteen.
Oh.
All right, so one of the first things we did as a Commission was establish our mission statement, which is to guide and direct, which will help us guide and direct our future efforts. And we see ourselves as serving as an advisory body to the City Council on matters related to preserving the historic character of the city. We also established a list of goals and objectives to help us fulfill this mission. I'm not going to go through all of these, but they center on promoting historic preservation in our community and working with citizens to help recognize and preserve the historic character of Inglewood. And we are going to fulfill these goals through a number of specific objectives listed here. Some we're going to go over in a little bit more detail tonight. These include establish a historic landmark program, identify properties threatened with demolition, and create a plaque to recognize our landmarked properties. And Matt here has created a plaque that we will eventually put on buildings that are designated as landmarks. In the future, we also hope to create a citywide inventory that will help us identify historic properties and historic districts in the community and identify specific ways to encourage preservation rather than demolition of our historic structures. And on sort of a side note, I've been told that at recent City Council meetings, there have been a number of citizens concerned with demolitions, and in the future, if you want to direct them to us, we're happy to help them address some of those issues if you need. So now Matt is going to go over in more detail some of the work we've done with demolition permits.
Okay, so with building demolitions, we analyzed previously issued demolition permits in the city of Inglewood to understand what type of buildings are being torn down. Over the course of our existence, we've been monitoring these by way of records requests to the Building Department. Some statistics here to kind of talk about the changes that are happening in our city, I guess. Eighty demolition permits were issued in 2016, ninety issued in 2017, seventy-one issued in 2018, and forty-four issued through October of 2019. From January 2017 through October 2019, seventy-six of these demolition permits were issued for single-family residences, and at least sixty-six of those homes were more than fifty years old. So, yeah, more than fifty years old. So that's, those were, you know, chances are, homes that were built in the 1920s, 1900s, during the earlier days of our city. More interesting with these statistics is approximately eighty-four percent of these demolitions for residents is located north of 285, District 122. So we've got a, we've got a pretty dramatic shift that's happening in our city right now. There's a lot of homes that are being torn down, and I'll kind of bring this around here, but our demolition permit. So, and effectively, the research of building demolitions revealed that we don't really know a whole lot on what exactly is being demolished in the city. From a history perspective, we're losing valuable information, and in some cases, basic information about buildings being lost. From a city perspective, it seems that there's a, there's some very important statistical information that is not being recorded, which could be valuable for documenting the changes in the city. The city of Inglewood building demolition permit requires far less information in detail, demolition permits, demolition permits and processes with other neighboring communities. So we asked today, how can we make this better? You know, up there is an example of the demolition permit in the city of Inglewood. And I printed out, copied here, a few copies, so that you all can see exactly what demolition permit looks like. Actually, technically, the city of Inglewood doesn't have just demolition permit, they have a building permit and a demolition permit in one. So we want to, this is, this is kind of the current permit, and I'll pass around for comparison's sake. I've got four copies of this because it was a lot of color, but.
These should have been included in, sorry, these should have been included in your packet.
Yeah, so I'll pass around the, you guys can kind of share, I've got a lot of papers. This is the Denver demolition permit. They, it contains a lot more information, it's a much, much longer process, requires neighborhood communications, you know, there's some influence from the, there is information going on, so. And we have actually talked with the Building Department office to see what information could be added. The person who spoke with the Building Department said that we could include the date of construction on demolition permits, which would be helpful for us. But anything outside of that would require council action to change, because apparently as in section, where am I, my notes here, sorry, in section eight, six, eight-six-two and the Inglewood Municipal Code is very specific on the information that is required on the demolition permit. And it's very specific and, well, it definitely fills the need there from, from a code and ordinance standpoint, but there's, there's not a lot of other flexibility or options for the Building Department to change without, without consent. So, yeah, I think, I think that's that. We're basically asking, asking for input from you guys, something we can do to help improve our demolition permit application. Move on here, unless you guys have any questions on the demolition.
I have questions all anyway. Why don't we let you do your whole thing and then let's come back and ask questions and give you any input.
Perfect, perfect. So I'm going to hit my floor, and she can do the landmark application process.
So, the Inglewood's Historic Preservation Ordinance actually allows for a landmark application and nomination process. However, the form was never created when it was, when was that created, maybe seven hundred years ago? And a form, there was never a landmark application created. So that was one of our first concrete goals, that we wanted to have an application so that people can nominate buildings to be an Inglewood landmark. And this has kind of a twofold goal. One, to help us understand, you know, what we have in our community, but it also creates a larger goal, like with a sense of pride and why Inglewood has, and recognizing the resources that embody our history. So we've established, or we've created this draft application that's included in your packets. We've also included instructions for how to fill it out and established a process for how these applications will work with city staff and with the Commission to be approved. As with the demolition permits, we looked at what other communities across the state are doing. We also looked at the National Register of Historic Places nomination and pulled information and criteria from each of those. The final application is very similar to the, to many of these. It must have owner consent for a building to be listed as an Inglewood landmark. Typically, they'll have, buildings will have to be fifty years old or older, and most importantly, it does signif, they have to show historic significance, and this will be based on 105 criteria, which I believe is on page three of the application. But it must be associated with significant events in Inglewood's history, a significant individual, have a distinct architectural style or type, they could have an important connection to archaeology, or they could be an important visual landmark in the city. And like I said, these five criteria are really the crux of the application, because properties and historic simply because it's old and have to have some sort of historic significance, and that's where this application comes in. And so to kind of test the validity of these of the application, we conducted two pilot studies. One was the key big building in downtown Inglewood, and this, we filled out the application and submitted it to city staff to see what the process would work like on their end. It seemed to work well for them. The other, the other one we did was the David W. Brown House, also known as the Joshua School, and we actually submitted it directly to their Board of Directors to see if, how citizens reacted to the form, how they'd work with it, the ease of use, and it seemed to be well-suited for their use. So we're really hoping now to have the draft application finalized so that we can really start landmarking properties. And now CJ's going to talk a little bit more about other efforts being made to just.
Just at the point in time, we only have about five, seven minutes left, so maybe keep it, if you want, he'll be back for us.
Sounds great.
So the next part was, something I got excited about was the Inglewood, the Inglewood's map. I thought of that T-shirt that said, "My hood, Inglewood." And I even talked to the guy saying, "Hey, if we found out all these other neighborhoods, would you be interested in subtitling it?" And he totally is on board. So one of the first, one of our first projects, Mike Jones, who was on the board for a time, helped him work with me on this, and we started out with a hand-drawn artist vision in the 1890s, right? Then we had the sandboards, which was insurance maps and fire of 1919, 1927, 1933, and our evolution has definitely been different over the years. You can see how the neighborhoods were definitely more up on the north side, you see the big contingency later down, big suburban section. And then also, what was so interesting to me was seeing the way water flowed and how that created, like, these areas where water patches and drains and just land. And so the idea of neighborhood tiles were not as easy as you would think. We had the help of Arapahoe County IT Specialist Michael Hubbard help pull together the maps based on owner lots and titles and stuff way back when. And then we've even merged with something from the city that had been done to try to just kind of see about putting new titles in certain areas. But there's all these nooks and crannies throughout the city that was built later, or how does that relate to this whole big neighborhood? I live in Arapahoe Acres, that's easy. I've got that one down pat, but these other neighborhoods that we're hoping will instill a pride, I am so excited. I have not had the time to contact, but I'm looking forward to working with the teamwork of Inglewood's new Neighborhood Outreach Coordinator, Madeline Hainfuss, and formalize this and get this information out to our colleagues, our participants, our citizens. Oh, yeah, there's the first map. Caught me stuffing my mouth. Good, no questions. So I think it's never stone, thank you for the presentation, very helpful. Nor sign that slide out. Oops, sorry, I had my light on.
So it said demolition permits issued. Do we know if all those were actually demolished?
Majority of them, yes.
Light her phone, I think, or, yeah.
Yes, majority of those were. It's, it's hard to know if they were completed because of the methods used to, these are fire requests and permits are old. We do actually have a brief census that's compiled of all the properties, and we, you know, there are properties that were partially demolished, we focused on just the properties of the full demolition.
Manager Lewis, do you know off the top of your head roughly how many residential properties there are in the city?
Anybody in the audience?
Number of residential properties in the city, whether rental or home, I don't think.
I've gone only to, but I've heard somewhere around about fourteen thousand.
Okay, because that's, that's 361 demolitions by adding up your numbers in the period that they studied, so that's probably about three houses a month.
Other comments, and I think they would like some input into the landmark idea, right? Is that part of it? Yeah, okay. Member Anderson?
Yeah, I really like the landmark idea, looking forward to seeing where that goes. And also, what was the first thing that, that you wanted some input on from?
The demolition permit, perhaps.
Just the demolition permit. I would support looking at, looking at that, just to put my opinion on that, I think that's a, you know, it'd be great for gathering that, I'd be happy to talk with council about expanding that.
Sure, I'll kind of be candid with it and say that there are, there are other cities that are, that are less than Denver. Denver's quite the process. However, there are no cities that are to base because of our application. One page, in fact, it doesn't even fill the entire page. There, there, I feel that there should be a process involved with that. You know, different cities require historic preservation review of the buildings, that's really where we'd like to eventually issue ordinance to, especially if there's a historic problem we'd be able to comment on. There's a lot of, a lot of changes happening in our city, I don't think we quite realize the impact that this has had towards, towards our neighborhoods and communities and history.
Other comments, your questions? Mayor Portem, zero.
Thank you very much for all the work that you did on this and, and serving on the board as well, but I would be open to having council look into this as well, just talking about the permit process, the demolition permit process at a later study session, so I'd agree with them.
Member Week.
I think, maybe, yeah, turn here. Thank you, thank you, Mayor. So in terms of the second application you showed us, I think the historic, the landmark application process, we only saw page one, correct, in the slide?
Only page one.
Right, and then you mentioned page three, and I have written down, you know, what criteria you're using, and then you started speaking to it, so how many pages is it?
It's just three pages.
Okay.
And it should be included in your packet, the entire application.
Is it included in it? Lovely, thank you.
Member Russell, and then, member question, is your light on?
It is.
Thank you, I saw it, I know. I got you. No, you're, you're next.
Thank you, and thank you for coming, I greatly appreciate the work that you've done, and I, will you all have input for us in things that you think that City Council should address as far as the landmark application and, you know, information that you all need that would be helpful for our city in the long run?
Well, yeah, we, we, you know, we, when we were looking at demolition permit, we kind of looked at it from different, different places. What would we really, really want on that? And we quickly kind of went down the path of, well, this probably shouldn't be decided by us alone, it should be something that involves the members of City Council and your input, and then also the city staff. And so we definitely need help with kind of bringing that together and, and having a, a good positive, common conversation, I guess, on that, as to where we want this to be. I mean, we would, we would like to be involved, you know, in, in presenting that process, and I don't know if that's, that's, that's really not too far outside of what other cities do.
Sounds good. I can imagine, and I think maybe if I could piggyback on that, if it, it would help is if you came up with what you fear we're losing in information, that by not having this, you should sort of start cataloging, like, we're not finding out this, 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 so that we can begin to think about how do we, what do we flush this out to, because you're the experts in this really, and then figuring out what does that mean to us when we find all that out, sort of, and do with it. Member Russell, did you want to continue with something?
I just, I just had another thought. Are there things that we, if we have the information we need, that perhaps we should reconsider allowing some buildings from being demolished?
And that's one of the things we're working towards as well, is how to establish some sort of protections for these landmarked properties. And we're currently looking, again, at what other communities are doing and how things are working to their process, as part of the demolition process, how they work towards protections for those landmarked properties.
Thank you so much, I greatly appreciate that, and I am on board with that, thank you.
Member Queston.
I just want to say praises really quick, and first, thank you for staying so long, you know, but we, we overshot our time, so I appreciate being gracious and waiting us out. I, as was the liaison for this commission as well, and I think that the first bit of information provided on the demolitions, it really has a lot of context to some of the other conversations we're having right now, and where's the city going, and where is seeing the most development. To me, I think the household conversation was a great question, but then you look at eighty-four percent of the demolitions happening and taking place in one and two districts, so I think that we can even, we can close that window a little bit and say, there's been a lot in these targeted areas. And as we, as we move into the future, and there's a lot of changes we've got coming, noting the heritage between the neighborhood names and historic preservation, I think goes a long way, and I think it's that character that people still really appreciate in the city, and I think it's one of the things that keeps people here for as long as they have, and it brings people in as well. So I appreciate the work you do, it's incredible, I'm privileged to be part of the group, thank you.
Member Week.
Thank you, Mayor. Have you all collaborated with the Cultural Arts Commission? Because I see a connection here and an opportunity to maybe share where there may be some overlap in terms of their initiatives and what you are doing. I think it could benefit both groups.
We've not done anything directly with them yet. I think we've spent the last couple years just trying to get ourselves established in where we want to be, but that is one of our, neither one of our goals or objectives, but that is in our plans, yes.
I also want to encourage, one of these homes actually was in Arapahoe Acres, it was demolished, and nothing seemed to actually help with that particular one, so there's a great neighborhood to cut your teeth on, as to what does this all mean? If you were to tell people you can't demolish your home, that would be the one you'd think most everybody would buy into that, but they're not all there, as, as one of our members knows. So if we can't do that in a neighborhood that looks obviously something that should be protected, how would you do that in other neighborhoods? So I agree with you that there are other neighborhoods you need to look out for, but that's one that you would have thought had some protection. So I don't want to get into a conversation on it, but I do want to say, I'd love to hear how you work with those and what the landmark really means. Does it just mean, you know, what does that mean? Because you're telling people what they can and cannot do with their property, yeah.
Well, at this point, the landmark is simply a recognition of this is a historic building, and that leads to the education of helping people to understand why these places are seen, and how they create a sense of community and a sense of pride in what we have. And then the future would again be the protections for those, and it doesn't necessarily mean that they can't demolish buildings, it's just, it should go through this process so that we can review it and understand what's here, what are we losing, and then know how we're moving forward.
I love the idea, and I love the plaque, it's really heavy, too, but I could imagine everybody in Arapahoe Acres getting one of those, putting it on, and kind of staking their claim that, "We're landmarked here, let's not be messing around with this," because I think that's what people want, and it's voluntary compliance then, and it's a little easier. So I appreciate the work you're doing on this. So I think I'll get to this with City Manager and Mayor Portem and the rest, if you all want, just to make sure this gets on our study session to figure out how you're going forward on the two items that you wanted.
Thank you, Mayor, I agree, and we can put that on an upcoming agenda. I just want to echo on what CJ said about the, looking forward to working with you guys and our new Neighborhood Resources Coordinator, who was here tonight. We've had so many such long agendas, I've got lots of new staff to introduce to council, we'll do that soon. But thank you for that outreach, and I'll make sure that you guys are connected. The other thing is, the Communications Team is doing a lot of work, you know, in the, in the historic realm, as Councilor Week said, the Cultural Affairs is doing a lot of work, and Historic Preservation with some wraps and things on different structures around town. So really, that integration, I think, is going to be important, so I'll be working with those departments to try to make sure we're really coordinating in a unified effort.
Just want to say real fast, if you don't mind, City Manager, we'd love to help with, because I think one of the things that you and I had discussed at one point was the neighborhood, kind of place-making, the actual identification of the neighborhood districts, and we'd love to help with that.
This is a great beginning, isn't that the end? Okay, so let's keep working on this, and thanks for all the work that you've gotten done just in this last year of getting some real specific things going, so appreciate it. We'll see you again. Our second item tonight is the introduction and presentation by, by the City Center Developer. This is an informational meeting, we're developing manager Dan Pramus here to present with senior representatives from SKB to discuss the City Center Development. We have about twenty minutes, so I know I'm not deliberately told and tracked, but if you want us to be giving you input and asking questions in lead time, if you just want to present, then that's fine, too.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Portem, council members. Just very quickly, this is the culmination of a ten-month procurement process, beginning last February. As you know, we went through a very detailed competition, included our RFQ, RFP, numerous interviews, all kinds of other vetting with the developer that was recommended to council December 16th, and that's SKB of Loyola, Oregon, who's here tonight. They came in today and looking forward to presenting their qualifications and some of their initial ideas to you, and with that, I'll turn it over to Rich Marine to introduce himself and the team, and we'll just go from there. Thank you.
Great, thank you, it's a.
You have to turn on and pull a write-off because.
It's a pleasure to be here, thanks. We've had so many productive meetings with staff that it's very nice to get in front of everybody. So we're gonna, I'm gonna introduce everybody, the team, and then we've got a presentation to walk through, but we're gonna try to enter that at a good pace. But we're gonna try to enter that at a good pace, so we have lots of time for question and answers. So my name's Richard Morine. I'm an executive vice president of capital markets with the firm. I'm here in Denver. I grew up not too far from here, just down by Happy Canyon and TJ High School. And I joke with the team that I remember coming here with my family to Cinderella City to shop when I was much younger. Next to me is Todd Gooding. He's our president and is the project principal. Todd's out of Portland and has been with the firm all but the first three years of our founding. So he started in 96 with SKB. Next to Todd is John Olivier. John, as you see on the chart and our work chart leaders, senior vice president of development and senior project lead. And John has a heavy development and construction background and has been with the firm five years. And then we have Rebecca Arnold. Where's Rebecca? Rebecca is new to our growing Denver team and has been with us, you know, about 60 days. And she's a project manager for us here at Denver. And then also with us tonight is Bill Moon. You may have met Bill in the past. Bill's with TRIVA, project manager and principal there. So with that, if we go to, and then you can either listen or refer to the page up there, but I'm gonna just do a little high level before handing this over to Todd. But, and I know you've seen a lot of detailed information on us in the past, but we are a seasoned leading real estate developer operator in the Western U.S. And we were established in 1993. So I think it's in April, Todd reminded me, that it'll be our 27th anniversary. So we've, you know, been around some real estate projects over the history of the company. We currently manage a portfolio, as you'll see there, of about 5 million square feet. And that's made up of a very diverse mix of product type, okay? Total transactions to date, you know, would be about 29 million square feet. And that redevelopment activity, which is very important here, where we've gone in and redeveloped, et cetera, about 4.5 billion of investment activity. Very strong relationships with capital partners as well. I know that's very important when you've been talking to us and talking about projects that, you know, could really change and modify the character for the betterment of Inglis City Center. So with that, kind of going through the very high level, I'm gonna turn it over to Todd, who's gonna walk you through the next portion of the presentation.
Thanks, Rich. So as Rich said, we've been in business for 27 years now, and we've certainly evolved over those 27 years. And I would say our emphasis the past four or five years has really been on finding neighborhoods that are on the verge of taking off or to that next great neighborhood. We spend a lot of time, and I'll give you a couple case studies in this, trying to find the green shoots for a neighborhood that is about to take off. And then we try and identify opportunities that allow us to help that neighborhood grow. We've got quite a bit of, our markets over in our Denver, Portland, Seattle, San Francisco Bay Area, Phoenix. I just would say Denver is our second largest market that we have investments in right now. Portland's our largest. We just recently made a very large industrial acquisition in just east of Rhino in Denver. So we're committed to the down the market. And then, you know, we tend to be more channelist in the product type that we work on. We have, you know, office, retail, industrial, multifamily. We have, we have quite a bit, you can see this in the case studies again, quite a bit of experience in suburban mixed-use environments. And so that's kind of what got us really excited about the Inglis opportunity. So to that note, you know, we've, we have about, I think, two-thirds of our portfolio is in and around the light rail station. And the project here in Beaverton is the one on the north, in the far left-hand, top left-hand corner. We've redeveloped office buildings right next to the university, or Portland State University, which is where J. K. Center is. And then the Iron Farm project is an industrial project not within 300 yards of the light rail stop. And we're partnering on this opportunity with you folks, with TRIVA Architects, which we know you have a long history with, and obviously they've, they've done you this station in Colorado Center. So I can get into, you know, what's important to SKB and why it's important to us and why it's important to the city. But I think what I'd really like to focus on and talk about is, well, kind of what makes us excited about this opportunity. And then get into a couple case studies about it. You know, this, as we understand it, and I certainly don't profess to be an expert on Inglis, and I'm hopeful that if I missay something or say something, that hopefully you guys can educate, educate us along the way. But the fact that this has really been, you know, this was originally a shopping mall. Before that, it was, you know, it was something else. And it just, the opportunity here to help this evolution happen is very exciting to us. And the thing that really got my interest and excited about it is you've got these three really wonderful resources here. You've got the Museum of Outdoor Art. You've got, you've got the light rail stop. And you have a, you've got this great little corridor on Broadwood Street, which has got this great restaurant scene and very much a developing restaurant scene. And so those were the things that kind of got me excited about wanting to participate in this RFQ. So just a couple of things about us and why we think we're qualified to help the city of Inglis execute this redevelopment plan. This is, this project's called The Round. It's in the city of Beaverton, which is just west of downtown Portland. The city of Beaverton has got about 90,000 people. This project, all the yellow areas are the city of Beaverton owns. The red areas are the city that we own. This project was originally developed in 1997, and the city mandated that everything that we owned in the red, in conjunction with a couple of the yellow buildings there, all had to be developed at the same time. And in total, it was about 700,000. It was intended to be 700,000. It went through three separate developers before we got involved. And it just, everybody had all the right intentions. Everything, everybody wanted it to be successful. Economic indicators or economic conditions just didn't allow, you know, build that kind of critical mass at one time. And so what we ended up doing is partnering with the city. When we showed up, all of our assets in red were owned by two separate lenders. The assets in yellow were owned by another lender, and because it had all been REO. And we had to, we had to sit down with the city, redo, completely redo the development agreement. The first task that we did is just really try to make the project look finished and get occupied and successful. And then we've subsequently programmed a number of events in the plaza that you see there. And it's been, and the city moved their city hall into the, into the lower left-hand yellow building there. And so it's really been a great success for us and the city. And so subsequent to that, the buildings on the far left have been developed as apartment buildings. There's a hotel under construction. And the top yellow building up there is a $43 million Center for Performing Arts that we sold the city the land to get done. And so it's, and it's been, it's been a great partnership for us, and it's something that we're really proud of. And we have a long-term commitment to this property. The next one is a mixed-use project down at Phoenix called Ice Street. This was originally intended to be a 2.3 million square foot mixed-use project with Saks and Nordstroms and Bloomingdale's. Recession came, and they really, they only got the first base done. Saks and Nordstroms and Bloomingdale's all said we're not coming. And so you had this beautiful, you know, the previous developer invested $300 million getting this project off the ground. And the office space was 20% of the east, retail was 20% of the east. Most of the retail weren't paying rent. But it was in a great, it was in a very good neighborhood and in Desert Ridge area, which is in North Phoenix. And so we decided, rather than if Nordstrom and, and, you know, Bloomingdale's aren't showing up, how can we kind of revitalize, how can we energize this property? And we ended up turning all of the retail into an entertainment district. We spent a lot of time and energy procuring local restaurants to, there's not one national restaurant. Oh, I take that back. There are two national restaurants in here. But most of them are local restaurants that we've sought out and tried to procure and help foster, created leases that allowed them to be successful early on while they were building their brands. And then once the, once we got a few restaurants going, the office tenants showed up because they wanted to be, have proximity to the, to the amenities. And then the, and then the, and then retail, the residential was filled up as well. Again, we kind of focused really heavily on a, on a event scene, which is, you guys have a beautiful venue out here to host events and leverage that into, into a lot of interaction with the community. So with that, I'm gonna, how much time do we have left?
I would suggest that we actually, if you wanted to get feedback from us, because we're talking about extending this contact, right? So I'm sure there are questions. I know I have one to kick off. But if you think you've got something you really need to tell us more on this side.
No, I think we can, I think we can, John was gonna talk about the execution side, but we'd be happy to.
It might be in the execution side that we're gonna have questions. Because I know my major thing that maybe council members will have this is, how will you engage the public in envisioning this place? I think that's a critical piece for us because of the history of it. People do remember coming to Cinderella City and what was there before, and so there's a lot.
That's a great question. And it's obviously, it's obviously with most of these projects that we've had been a critical part of what is made. You know, we've had a hand in a lot of broken projects, didn't work before we got into them. And it was through that community engagement, whether it was in the visioning process or whether it was post kind of visioning and just making sure that it became kind of a gathering place and involving the community. And we recognize that you all have a long, long history and a deep understanding of what this place has been and probably some really strong opinions and thoughts about what it should be. And so we look at our role here as not people coming in, stepping in and saying, well, this is what this should be. It's really our role to help kind of air it out. What makes, what's going to make this unique to you all as the city and to your citizens and the community at large? And kind of tease that out and really help execute and bring that, bring that to life. And so as part of that, what we really want to do is to make sure that we have a pretty robust community engagement effort throughout the process. And so this kind of illustrates, it's not perfect in that we have kind of little bubbles, and I don't think it all works exactly that way. But you really, at the outset, would engage collaboratively with the city to come up with a strategy for community engagement. How, how will we engage? Who are the stakeholders? What does this kind of plan look like? And it's gonna be an evolving plan, but I think we would really do that at the outset. And, and you can see that there will be touch points, continuing touch points kind of throughout that process so that we really get community engagement, city input, and that's really what is going to make this, this, we'll call it a master plan, the strongest plan, and really set it up for the best execution.
Do you want us to ask questions?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I think that would be the best.
Good. Council, questions, tips, concerns? Member Questa, you look like you're formulating something. A light went on even. Go ahead.
Well, thank you for joining us tonight, the SKB team. And I'm not sure if this question would be for you, and maybe it goes out to yourself. So after this, we're having a discussion on stormwater infrastructure. We've got to replace some park projects. Stormwater goes on proposal funded by utility fees. The parks would be a valid question, potentially to citizens. When does the mortgage mature here? I guess would be my first question. When does the city Inglis take over ownership of this building from you? You've told us before, but it'd be a refresh, remember?
Yes, the certificates of participation run through 2023.
2023, and that would be when renovation would be scheduled to begin. I see the timeline included that went through 2020, but we'd be talking 2023 then before anything actually began here?
Yeah, that would be a natural, though one of the things we've talked about is the developers stepping in at an earlier day, retiring the certificates of participation to facilitate the earlier redevelopment, particularly this building and this site.
Very good. And the reason I'm asking, I think that there's a collective agreement that there's an incredible opportunity here at this site. It sounds like you guys have a lot of vision for it as well. We're gonna be, there's some upcoming expenses for the citizens between infrastructure, potentially with park upgrades. Is this, this would be done through bonds as well? Has that even been considered where funding for this will come from? And the reason I ask is just so I can have a perspective of all these upcoming expenses that we have for citizens.
I would say, and we spent a long time this afternoon actually talking about public finance alternatives, but the general concept is that the city would not be coming out of pocket to fund the redevelopment. So the redevelopment going forward would really be funded by SKB and by funding mechanisms that we put together in collaboration. And so I'll also remind you that the series of agreements going forward, we're just talking about the recommendation to enter into an exclusive negotiating agreement that we would bring back to council later in February. That then contemplates about 90 days to work out a pre-development agreement. And the pre-development agreement would cover the remaining process to get to a final development agreement. So all those financing elements would be worked out during those phases of agreements going forward. And council would have essentially a go-no-go decision at each one of those agreements.
And so using the timeline that you just provided, when would that, when would that come to council? Just even as a ballpark, that no-go-no-go decision?
The, well, the very first one would be the exclusive negotiating agreement in February. And at the end of the line would be the full-blown development agreement. The hope would be to have that fully reviewed and approved by council by the end of 2020.
Very good. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Good questions. Member Russell?
Thank you, ma'am. I have a couple of questions. So how would the DDA play into financing this? Is that all part of the financing piece?
We're still heavily exploring that. You know, I think the biggest hurdle for this immediate property is the shared parking, you know, the parking that we're gonna have to continue to provide for the community to use the NRTD users. And so we need to figure out, we're gonna, we're gonna first start with a parking study to figure out what RTD is actually using versus, and figure out how much incrementally more parking are we going to have to fill. And then from there, there's other items that might, I don't want to make, I don't want to lead you to believe that it's only parking, but parking would probably be the super majority of any material expense. And so then the question... And so then the question is, how do we fund that? And it can either be through private development, if the economics allow for it, then that's great. If it's not through private funding, then we'd have to look at the DDA or some other form of public financing to help us get there.
Okay, thank you. And then, and I don't know if this plays into this at all, but in the project in Arizona, the High Street project, what was the average median income in that area?
The average median income in High Street is probably around $80,000.
Eight, okay.
And in Beaverton, it's about $63,000.
Okay. And there's a population of 90,000 in the High Street area? Or is that, was that in?
No, that was in Phoenix. So Phoenix is, you know, 4 million people. That community within a five-mile radius was probably around 35,000 people.
Okay, so somewhere between what we have.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Others?
Thank you. I'm sure we're going to have them along the way. It's great to get to know a little bit where you've come from and some of these projects. Are all these projects pretty easily accessible online? Just go take a look and poke around a bit?
Either through our website or, yeah, a number of the properties do have their own website. High Street definitely does. The Rams does not. But we can certainly, and we did provide case studies that are in here materials for all of these. So, but if there's any specific projects that you have a question and we can't find it, we can be happy to answer it.
Thank you. I'm sure we can direct the staff as well. Andrew Lewis gets his light and he'll come back to it.
Yeah, so just like for Dan, if you wouldn't mind just running us through the timeline since that was the first question now that it's up on the screen?
Sure. Generally, the concept would be if council consents this evening, we'd move forward to finish up an exclusive negotiating agreement. We would bring that back to council by, I think we show March 1 up there. The hope would be to try to get that approved, reviewed and approved by council in February if possible. And then following that is a period required to put together a pre-development agreement. And that's generally anticipated to take 30, excuse me, 60 to 90 days. So that would put us into springtime. That shows approximately May 1 or June 1 up there. And then we would take the balance of the year to really put together the detailed development agreement that would go hand in hand with a redevelopment plan for the city center area. And you may remember just by way review, this is a city-controlled property that's been in blue on the diagram that we typically have up there. And then, you know, one of the things I just really wanted to mention briefly is SKB had a long interest in the adjacent former Wyngarden property, which they still do. And one of many reasons that we as a staff had recommended SKB is we think that that still ultimately holds open the best opportunity to fit together the city-controlled property and the Wyngarden, former Wyngarden property.
Excellent. Member Anderson has a question. Another question.
Thank you, SKB teams. Great to hear and see the possibilities and see what you've done in other areas. I see these are really, really big projects, most of them is this. Do you guys normally work on that scale? I mean, let's just try to explore the ideas here. Let's say we got into it and with the conversations with the community and we had, I'm not trying to point towards the direction I want to go or anything right now, but we ended up with some situation where we wanted to scale back the project a little from some of the size of the possibilities. Maybe structure RP turned out to be something we couldn't figure out a way to finance. Are you guys accustomed to working on projects that aren't quite that scale? Is that something of interest or is that giving you a sweet spot going really big?
Well, obviously bigger is more efficient for us, okay? With that being said, given the investment of human resources and staff that we have here in Denver, you know, as well as Portland, we do take on smaller projects. This is one of them. We did this with TriVa. TriVa was the architect on this. It's a $6.3 million project just on the east side of the river in downtown Portland.
And actually, I just noticed the typo, I'm sorry. That $6.3 million was the purchase price for the property. The actual project cost was $14 million.
I wondered how cheap that was.
Yeah, no, I was just saying, I just noticed that, so I apologize. So yeah, it's closer to $14 million. So it was also still relatively small.
There's definitely a range in scope and size of these projects. So yes, accustomed to smaller, medium, then large.
Can you use the mic? Remember, Quest, a question.
Mr. Prama, thank you for bringing up the Wyngarden properties. And sometimes I forget we're doing these ideally in conjunction. Can you provide an update of where that stands, Wyngarden properties? Is the hope still to redevelop in conjunction, the two different sites?
We'd like to orchestrate it so it turns out that way. We continue to have ongoing discussions with the new special servicer, which is now Allen Our Properties. And we are trying to work towards encouragement to them to offer that property to the marketplace as a redevelopment opportunity rather than a status quo as is fading retail center. And so we're doing everything we can to move in that direction. And we think that'll probably entail coming back to council with some ideas for either extending the ground lease or more likely considering a sale of the underlying property to create a redevelopment scenario that matches up with what SKB has shown on the city property.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Great. Thank you very much for presenting. We'll record the next stage.
Thank you.
So folks, we have the next one is stormwater fee rate study update. Would you like a quick stand-up break for five minutes or do you want to just keep moving? And then in that same vein, I'd like to say that I think we're going to be here possibly if we take an hour here, it'll be 10:00 and then 10:20 if we stay on track. Councilor Russell.
Can I just ask a question about the legal aspect of it? City staff and the E-Board have attorneys that they're doing negotiations with. So who is actually protecting the seven of us in all of this?
City council retained legal counsel on this matter. And you reviewed RFPs and you chose the legal counsel that city staff is working with. That legal counsel is supposed to occasionally report to me so I'll know where they're at, but their primary goal is meeting the request of city council.
Okay, so are, there's no conflict of interest between the discussions? And so the attorneys that were hired are actually protecting our interests as a council as well?
You are their client. And they're on the schedule to show, to show up here and give you a presentation, I think, in two weeks. So you'll get to touch base and ask them those questions again directly.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a really? Right, that's right. Thank you. All right, so back to the question. Do you want to just keep moving? And then if you, so if anybody thinks you need a break, like, you know, just let's go like this and get up. And I hope that you feel like you can stand up during these things and listen at the same time, because I certainly like to do that. All right, so this item is a stormwater fee rate study. Finance Administrator Director Maria Sabat is here along with my secretary to present our study and analysis, along with the bonds and interest parks and recreation.
Not every city council member is here today. Thank you, Mayor. City council members, I'll try to smile a little bit during this presentation. So tonight, I am here to share with you information related to the stormwater fee and rate study and analysis, an update on a timeline, a proposed timeline of if we do so choose this route for revenue bonds and also parks and rec go-bys scenarios. As you'll recall, council had directed us to engage consultants to gather information related to neighboring jurisdictions, current and historical stormwater fee and rates, and compare them to the city of Englewood. The city selected RevTelus to assist staff in evaluating those rates and also to build a financial model to support the stormwater drainage projects that have been discussed during past study sessions and regular meetings. Tonight, as Mayor Olson mentioned, I'm joined at the table with Director Randy Andre, Director of Public Works and the interim Director of Utilities. A section in tonight's memo also included a potential ballot question to support parks and recs projects. Our new Parks and Rec Director Christina Underhill is here also to address any questions you may have specific to those projects. And I'm sure former Director of Parks and Rec Dorothy Harbrow will be readily able to assist if needed as well in that area. And then joining city staff today is Todd Cristiano and Alex Gering from RevTelus. And then also David Bell and Andrew Wheeler from Stiefel, our financial advisor. And I'd like to thank them for joining us and being able to respond to any questions that you have regarding the fee rate study or related financials that I'm not able to answer. Before I begin, I'd like to say that tonight's presentation provides new information to city council. And we will continue to address any questions that you have specific to projects that we've been discussing over the past several weeks. We'd be open to those as well because I know that that information has been shared over the course of many study sessions. So we want to make sure that we continue to answer questions as they come up. So with that all being, I'm going to take just a little bit of time to preface before I get into the actual results of the study because staff certainly recognizes the burden that additional fees and rates actually put to the citizens and the taxpayers. So we could, as we've discussed, bring forth a request to transfer funds from the general fund in the amount of 10% of the stormwater utility revenues, which isn't substantial, of course, but we would do that in the form of a grant, not a loan. With the current revenues, based on the current fees and rates, conservative figure would be approximately $75,000 could be transferred. However, if fees and rates are increased, of course, that amount would increase proportionately, 10% of that. In addition, in previous study sessions, we have discussed the possibility of a state-revolving fund loan, sometimes referred to as the Colorado Water Pollution Control Revolving Fund. To that end, the city has completed the pre-qualification form. We have also held a pre-application meeting and we have done the project needs assessment. And we also have drafted a FEMA Advanced Assistance Application. On February 20th, we plan to meet again with the team to discuss whether or not we have made a decision to move forward in that direction. What I will say is that regardless of whether or not we move forward with any type of funding in the form of a loan, a fee or a rate increase would be required at this point to support the projects specifically for S1 and S2 as we have been discussing. Staff also realizes that it's difficult for city council to make a decision regarding one utility without having all of the information related to the other utilities. And last week, when Director DeAndre talked about the stormwater funds requirement for S1 and S2, we laid out a timeline for the other utilities and that also was included in the packet tonight. And we can talk about that towards the end. We do expect that the water and sewer master plan reports are expected to be completed in early spring. And those comparison of current rates relative to rates reported were required to support water and sewer infrastructure and the ongoing maintenance need would be discussed related to those other utilities at that time. It's important, however, that council does start evaluating the funding required to address the stormwater drainage requirements and system infrastructure needs. And so it's our intent to bring forth a palatable phased-in approach and recommendation for council to consider and discuss tonight. Staff will continue to evaluate the best cost of capital solution for these projects for bonding and/or an infrastructure loan and/or a revolving fund loan as we had discussed. But tonight, the discussion will be focused on sharing with the council, sharing with the council the fee rate study outcome and the level of funding to support the stormwater drainage projects regardless of how you so choose to accomplish that. Okay. So RevTelus submitted their evaluation of the current and historical stormwater utility fees and rates. And they have also provided the city based on our direction of certain assumptions with a five-year stormwater utility fund financial plan. The recommended fee structure for the next five years enables the city to fund the S1 and S2 projects to the amount of approximately $30 million plus fund $500,000 in maintenance and operations in 2021 and assumes a $1 million investment in ongoing needs after that. And as a reminder, council would be required to vote on any fee rate or increase to support a revenue bond. So at this point, I'd like to take an opportunity to review the assumptions that were built into that financial plan and then also a look at the other jurisdictions' historical rates as compared to Englewood. So in this, we'll talk about the study goals and objectives. I'll look at the historical bill surveys, our financial plan projection that I just provided over before, and then a typical bill survey under existing and proposed rates. So when we set forth and sent RevTelus on their way, the one thing that we had asked them to do is to develop a five-year financial plan that sustains the long-term financial health of the storm drainage by addition to funding these projects. The project rate revenues need to be sufficient to meet our annual expenditures. We need to optimize revenue, increasing the balanced use of rate revenue and bond. We need to maintain our reserve levels in accordance with industry best standards and practices. We would need to satisfy all that service coverage requirements. And we propose rates to fully recover the utilities' annual expenditures. We asked RevTelus to go back approximately 20 years and compare Englewood's quarterly rates for the storm drainage utility for a comparison of residential customer with a parcel size of approximately 9,000 square feet or an impervious area of 9,800 square feet. As you can see in 2002, at our rates of $4.16, excuse me, that's going to happen tonight, $4.16 as compared to the other utilities, you can see that we were in 2002 below these jurisdictions.
Could I ask just a quick question? Do you know how we compared to Denver with that? Because when I was on water and sewer, we always compared to Denver and Denver's not either.
We have comparisons for Denver in future years. That was information. And I would ask Todd, the information, if it wasn't included in this presentation, was not available.
Okay, thank you.
Is that an accurate statement? In 2008, again, you know, we made comparisons with the information that RevTelus was able to either collect from the jurisdiction itself or from online data that was provided. And you can see our fees did not change. And as you look up the chart as compared to the previous chart, you can see that increases started to occur in some of the jurisdictions, not all. In 2012, our rate remained the same at $4.16. Again, if you compare the slides, again, we're adding more information. Some of the jurisdictions increased. All were above ours, but some increased and some significantly. And what I'll stop to say here is that with Fort Collins and specifically, they faced the floods that occurred that year up north and realized that they needed to address the storm drainage issues that they were experiencing and the fees were increased significantly relative to the floods that had happened up north at that time. And in 2019, you'll recall that we came forth and had requested that our quarterly fees increased and we did approve, increased to $13.16. And we moved ahead of some of the jurisdictions that we were behind in the previous years, but we still, as a comparison, remained in the lower quartile as compared to a lot of the neighboring cities that we were able to capture data for. So I guess I'll stop there and give immediate reactions unless if you want me to just keep moving forward. keep moving forward, because I think, you know, I skimmed through that pretty quickly, and I will recap it as it relates to Denver and the other, and I'll talk about 2020 as it relates to Denver. But I think the main point that we wanted to convey in the fee and rate study, and the reason that we engaged Rantellus, was to show that not only did we have, not only was Englewood significantly below in 2002, as other cities continued to increase theirs over the past 20 years, we remained the same until last year. So it was a pretty significant finding.
Anybody want to jump in to that, Mr. Russell?
I just have a question about fee and rate study. Does that only deal with what other places are paying, or does it also deal with what we need to fix our problem?
So when we talk about the financial study that we're going forward with this presentation, we will talk about what's required to fix our needs.
Okay.
If I could add to that, the bulk of this study is really looking at what our needs are, and how much money, and what the rate should move to, to meet those needs. But it also includes this comparison, so you all can see kind of how we compare to other communities as well.
Okay, thank you. Can I give you the form?
Okay. So moving towards answering that question, again, answering forward to the five-year model, the projections that are included in this were based on our budget data, the five-year capital improvement program. The annual inflationary factors that we included were an increase of 3.5% in operating expenses. The target reserves, best practices that I mentioned, 60 days of operations and maintenance costs, capital one-year depreciation expense. Our debt service coverage requirement was approximately 1.25 times per net income. You'll see it's slightly above particularly early on, because we need to establish a revenue to support the bond issuance, to attract the bondholders and attract a lower rate. And we also included approximately $30 million bond issuance for S1 and S2 projects beginning in 2020. So the financial plans that we're putting forth assume how the city of Englewood would be able to fund the $30 million on issuance to support the S1 and S2 project. I think that's to your point. What do we need to sustain that within the city of Englewood? Along with $500,000 in operations and maintenance in 2021, and then $1 million going forward in 2022 through 2024, within the five years that this financial model projects. So this is really the crux of the matter before we start talking about the fee and rate increases that are meant to support this. So with the assumptions that I just set forth, you can see we would have to achieve earnings or revenue, $1 million this year, increasing to $3.5 million over the next five years to support that bond issuance, and to support the target reserves that I've just talked about, relatively stable, and the O and M expenses that we shared. So in order to do that, a residential quarterly bill that today is in 2019 is $13.16. In 2020, would increase approximately $6.97 to $20.13. An additional $10.67, or a total of $30.81 in 2021 quarter. In 2022, additional $12.94 to $43.74. An additional $14 in 2023 to a total of $57.74 per quarter in '23 and '24, again, to support the bond issuance. And again, I mentioned that the debt service coverage would be higher in 2020, as we established the foundation of to be able to go out to the bond issuance. So it is an increase, a substantial increase, but it is also a $30 million investment that we're talking about. This shows graphically that increase, comparison of the residential bills, that's going to be increased. And I wanted to show in 2020, where the increase to $20.13 would place us in comparison to other cities in the jurisdictions. And this is the chart that would also include Denver at $39.27, Fort Collins at $48.92, and Boulder at $52.62, along with other neighboring communities, such as Aurora at So we also asked for the commercial customer with an impervious area of 42,000 square feet, where Englewood stands in comparison in 2019 and 2020 with the recommendations that we've set forth relative to those same jurisdictions, and you can see those comparisons that were included. And this is just an example for Englewood, where this would compare for our local grocery store, family restaurant, a fast food, church, a hospital, gas station, with the 2020 quarterly bill and what the 2019 quarterly bill would be. So with that, I want to take a breath. There's a lot of information to share. I also want to talk about Parks and Rec tonight, so I can ask if you'd like to take time to talk about specifically storm water drainage, or if you'd like me to proceed into Parks and Rec.
Mr. Russell?
So these rate increases are not only, that you've weighed out for us, are not only going to fund the bond issue, or the loan, or whatever, but it's also going to fund $500,000 in 2020 for maintenance, and $1 million a year for maintenance going forward?
In 2021, $500,000.
Correct.
And then in 2022 through '24, a million.
Yes. Above paying the debt service.
Okay, thank you. Member Anderson?
Thank you for that presentation. Those are big numbers. How long is that term on the assumptions on the bond issue for paying off that $30 million?
I'm going to look behind me, only because we ran several scenarios, and I just want to make sure I have the right number. 25 years.
25 years. So the rates, just to pay for the S1 and S2, would need to stay at that level for 25 years? Any improvements in the future would require an additional increase if we required more improvements to the storm drainage system?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Number Questa?
Thank you, Mayor. So the projections, it gets to 2024, where it hits $57.74 quarterly. Prior to that, in 2023, it's $57.74 as well. It doesn't forecast beyond that. I think this goes to Councilmember Anderson's question. I mean, we know it won't go below that again, but is it, are you at all able to forecast when those next increases just naturally would come along?
I can't, without direction from council regarding projects that you'd like to do, or if there would be maintenance issues, unless you have a concrete, for example?
Just, thank you. I think what we would recommend is, as we've seen in the past, is instead of doing very large increases, is doing some small incremental changes, maybe almost every year, to keep up not only with kind of ongoing increasing costs, but also to address future capital needs.
Thank you.
Number Stone?
And if I'm reading the colorful graph correctly, it's with the debt service and maintenance, it's keeping us right at almost exactly our target reserves, no excess.
That's correct.
Gotcha.
Mayor Johnson?
Thank you very much for the presentation. I kind of wanted to go back to what we spoke of last week, and just see if that plays a role into anything that we're discussing tonight in terms of the rate increases. Are we talking about some sort of project program funding that you'll be sticking to for federal grants, federal dollars, or anything like that? Does that play a role in any of these numbers, or would that be just, if we, because we're only talking about S1 and S2, are we looking at those programs more of like S3, or any of the other 12 or 13 other projects that we're looking at?
So when we submitted the application for the revolving loan that I mentioned earlier, it was specifically for S1 and S2. That would suggest that that couldn't be a conversation that we had in the future. We perhaps could do that. I will say, regardless of the tool by which we go forward with, whether it be on the issuance that we set forth or through a revolving fund, there is going to be a debt component to that that will require the increase. We do know, we are at a double A-plus rating. That's what we would be going to the market with. The loan on the revolving fund is triple A-plus, however, so the rate could be a little bit better. However, there is an administrative burden that comes with the revolving fund, and as such, they do offer somewhat of a reduction in the rate that we would pay back, and we would still need to determine what that would be. And I don't know if this is answering your question specifically. So it was S1, S2 for both assumptions here. There's a possibility we could talk about S3 as it relates to it, as far as the application for the revolving fund, but either way, it's their financing mechanisms. So that's why I stated at the beginning that we could determine how we were going to move forward, you know, at a future date is really what's helpful to the council as far as the rate increase to support any type of borrowing, quite frankly. Is that fair?
Member Russell?
I remember in 2014, before I came onto City Council, there was a flood study in northeast Englewood, and that needed to be funded, I want to say $100 million, but we couldn't do it until Denver does their share from the river through Harvard Gulch and up here. But they were having pretty severe flooding in that area. So I think we need to keep this problem in mind, too, because there was already a study done back then, and pipes needed to be put in the ground in that area. And so if we have flooding next year in northeast Englewood, we could be facing even potentially greater problems than we're addressing right now here. So I think that's something we need to keep in mind.
Number Questa?
Thank you. We did have some discussions last week on S3 and S4 as well. Did you put a dollar amount on those two projects, and even individually if you have them in total?
Yes, if you recall, we were kind of talking about like a modified version of S3, what I called S3A, and that was somewhere in the range, I believe, of $3 million.
For S3A, and what would S4?
If I recall correctly, that was, in total, I think, was under $1 million, if I recall correctly.
You know, as I hear those numbers, it's $4 million, which is a lot of money, but it's 10% more than, 12% more than our current, and so it's in the back of my mind, potentially including those. I don't suppose we've run those numbers yet, although I imagine it would be that much more difficult to throw forward, but I know to that. Very good. Thank you, Senator Anderson.
Number Stone?
To Councilmember Rita's question, is there any potential for intergovernmental agreement that would help finance something in that area with Denver, if Denver's also going to suffer from similar flooding if we don't get the drainage handled to help pay for something in that area?
So the project that Councilmember Russell referenced, Harvard Gulch is downstream of where Englewood is, and so we flow, actually, or our water flows into Harvard Gulch in Denver. And so I think it's less of an intergovernmental agreement, as much as they have to prioritize that project in order for us to do any good. So we could move forward with a project up there, but we're essentially forcing warm water into their undersized system. So it's kind of a chicken and the egg kind of thing, just like if we were to do S2 ahead of S1, it doesn't make a lot of sense, and might negatively impact some people. So we would have an intergovernmental agreement, but they're not going to pay for anything with that necessarily.
This would involve the urban core as well, on this, right, with the North District?
Yes.
Similar. So interestingly enough, that that was the one that sparked all the studies back in 2014, and we're sort of hamstrung there. In the meantime, are there things we can continue to be doing to handle things in those two areas, including the flood district area of 120 homes that are in that area, that we've, I don't know if they've come out and did us, probably not, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think, and to Councilman Questa's, you know, comment, what can we do in small localized areas to help with flooding? So up in Ogden, 2900 block, you know, we've got some localized issues. We might not be able to solve the entire big problem, but maybe we can do something locally to help with that situation. And so we want to incorporate that into our kind of overall plan. They might not be in the $1 million projects, but maybe it's a couple hundred thousand here and there around the city to help address localized issues.
And the parks can be part of that, I mean, as we look at some of the renovations in parks, we can continue to look at where we catch water.
Absolutely, and I think even the item that we'll talk about next is what does private, how does private development play into this in terms of additional water detention on their properties as properties turn over and redevelop?
Further questions? Do you want her to move on to Parks and Rec?
Yep. You can circle back. Okay. So switching gears and talking about Parks and Rec, as you recall, during the 2020, I'm going to just move forward to, let me do this first. I noticed it called to me that this information was included in your pack. Especially a blue tape. I don't have blue tape for Parks and Rec tonight. So as you recall, in the 2020 budget cycle, we had discussed with you the possibility of issuing a ballot question to support GOBonds in 2019. However, the decision was made to postpone to provide the necessary time to finalize the project list, to seek your approval, and to also seek input of the community. So the list of projects is set ahead of you, and the prioritization of Cushing Park, Jason Park, Miller Field, and Little Dry Creek Greenway is estimated to cost approximately $14.7 to $18 million. And a year since the master plan was created, the investment of between $1.5 to $3 million is estimated for Pirates Gold to move it forward into the new and bright-chiney facilities that are offered elsewhere, and to really help with the decline in the revenue that we know works for Rantellus. Staff has been successful in giving grants to support Parks and Rec, but larger investments required. So GOBonds are different than a revenue bond. The GOBonds do require a vote of the people, and council will need to decide at a future date whether or not to refer the ballot question for November. And it's important that, you know, we understand the direction that you would like staff to take regarding that, because it's a requirement for us to notify the county of Arapahoe, our intent to participate in the election, by July 26th of this year. And there's a lot of work that needs to be done leading up to that date to make sure that we are ready to go. And first and foremost, the community outreach aspect of it is so critically important as we move forward towards November, that we want to prepare enough time to get the information out as soon as possible. So the information that was included in your packet regarding the financial impact, because there is a component, of course, of that required to the magnitude, the assumption that we built into a model is approximately a $20 million or $30 million bond issuance that would be assessed with an increase to the mill levy. And the example that was provided in your packet was the impact to a homeowner that has a home that's approximately $100,000. So for a $20 million investment, the increase would be approximately $11.24 at current rates, and assuming a 150 basis point increase to approximately $12.52 per year. That's a per-year figure. For a $30 million investment, approximately... For a 30 million dollar investment, approximately 16 dollars and 92 cent increase if rates remain about the same to approximately 18 dollars and 77 if they increase about 150 basis points. So another substantial investment to address our parks and recreation needs as well. We wanted to put forth both of those ideas in your minds and open it up for comments tonight and just really seeking your direction to move forward at the regular meetings in the future to come forth and request for a decision at that point. So with that, I will open it up to discussion before talking about timelines and as this relates to other projects that we're talking about relative to water and sewer.
Just as an overview, just to make sure, what is our current average home right now, private residence cost or value? It's like, I think I was given something last week. If Mayor, or Dr. Kog, that was a little low. Is it 300? Okay. That would be helpful to figure out. Cause 100,000 is this, but three times is 32 dollars, right? So. Mayor, or Member Russell is first, I think.
Thank you. I, it's 1.5 to 3 million to bring Pirates Cove up to, to get it where it will generate more income.
I don't know that we can say that with any certainty, but that's an estimate to make it more appealing.
Since Pirates Cove is not an enterprise fund and we do have money left in reserve, we could take the money out of reserves to pay for the upgrade and whatever we wanted to do at Pirates Cove and not have to put that out to, to be a bond from the people.
I think you are referring to the unassigned fund balance where we have a balance of approximately nine million dollars.
Yes.
And that is true. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Anderson and then another question.
Thank you. Good. Similar question to before. What's, what was the assumptions in terms of the term of these Go Bonds issues? How long, how long is it going to take to pay those off? Are we using assumptions here?
Okay, I'm going to turn around and look at Andrew Wheeler, but I think it's 20 years.
Would you like to come up? Maybe it might be better and share a line with them. There's someone right next to, there's another one right there. Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, 20 years.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Yep, that's the question I had. Yeah, so based on the Series 2017, do you want to get to similar terms? Okay.
Another question and your question.
My question was someone asked, or answered, excuse me, answered with how much do we have in the undersized reserves? And it's nine million currently?
It is. We are disclosing the books, however, so I expect to bring forth a preliminary estimate. I believe I do come back on February 10th. So the balance could be, could be higher.
And it appears in my two years here that it's trended upward. I don't, I can't recall the hit. Does that sound correctly that we continuously grown that under the fund balance?
That is correct.
Since she came, she's like magic, very dusty.
Sure.
Remember what I said last time, I'd like it to.
I know.
I don't really question phase, we'll get to comments, but I think that we should start talking about the reserve. I think the Councilman Williams brought us up as well for that to just sit there and did that collect interest? I was going to say does, hopefully it's collecting interest.
It is.
Good. Thank you.
Pardon?
Not a lot though.
Your question.
To be better used.
Yeah. To actually do something that's going to cost a whole lot more for you to apply to. Yeah, your question.
Thank you. Actually, so two questions. One is more of a ask. Someone said, what we did with the, the rate studies with other municipalities that, you know, for the parks and rec, I like to see something similar because I believe, you know, citizens that are actually under the purview of South suburban, I think they're paying quite a bit more than even the figures that you were presenting today.
So what we're proposing is that it would be part of a mill levy increase. There are, I believe, some municipalities that have done special assessments. So it would be a combination of both. And I don't know if you'd like to come in there. No? So is that, if that is a request, I could look into it and advise the cost that that would be to do that? Sorry, I thought Director Harbroad was coming to the table.
No, you were leaving.
Do you either correct me or no?
No, I guess my point is I can go back and check my math on this because I remember looking at the numbers, but I remember just seeing, you know, somebody that's living under South suburban is paying about 16 dollars a month. And you're stating at least with a $100,000 outside that, or value of 100,000 was about 12 dollars and 50 cents or something along those lines. So it is still small compared to what some of the other surrounding municipalities are.
And I seem to recall that we might have provided that in the past. So let me look into information that we've provided in the past and dust it off and provide that information to you again.
Getting some nods in the back.
I don't know.
To be easy, fine.
I felt like I just felt the nods or something. I don't know.
Mayor, can I add that the average, excuse me, the median home price is about 380,000 dollars.
So three times.
There you go.
And then also just in terms of using the unassigned fund balance, I'd be in favor that just starting to move funds, transfer to the capital improvement fund and start. I personally would like to start looking at it in terms of just parks specifically, if you're a park, you can talk to mine for me. But I went, you know, just started having those type of discussions.
Another question.
I imagine what you presented, if you had, you're going to be polling on a ballot issue like this and how it might be received by the community?
I do not. Actually, can I ask Director Harbroad to join us? She might have some information for my.
Some background on how we did the police building and stuff. My request was we did, was a major push to do polling and make sure that we were on par with what we thought people would do. Other than waste our time in their voter party.
We have not done specific voter polling on this issue. I mean, we kind of talked about doing that last year, but decided, and that's one reason that we need to move, if you want to move in that direction. We need to move expeditiously, so there's plenty of time for that. The Parks and Rec master plan involved an extraordinary amount of public outreach. You know, the priorities that are set here on the summer reaction plan reflect a lot of community input, but not necessarily statistically valid or, you know, for years later.
Sure. Well, one of those statements, I think, some of your question, I was meeting with a constituent within the past couple of weeks, and he mentioned potentially a citizens initiative on this. And so I'm wondering if anybody observed anything that citizens might be putting forward an initiative? Is this something we need to compete with or debate? And we're, I'm not sure if we end up stepping on each other's toes.
I fully believe we need to coordinate and get information out and be very open, very forthcoming, a lot of information. Andrew Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to let council know that in addition to meetings that occurred before I got here, particularly with former Parks and Recreation Laboratory Director, Dorothy Harbroad, we do have a meeting this week with a group of people who have been asking for a few weeks to meet with myself, Deputy City Manager Harbroad. We're also going to include our new Parks Recreation Laboratory Director, Christina Underhill. And so they are going to come, I suspect with a number of requests. And as the mayor indicated, it's our intention to really try to coordinate with them because we think it would actually be better for this to be more council-driven than resident-driven. Although we will need certainly if you all decide to pursue a bond, that would be a group that would be probably your biggest champions out there trying to get the vote out.
My last conversation with some of those folks is they really wanted us to take the lead and they would help us get the vote out. But if there are other avenues for us to do this by using unreserved funds, then we need to be clear. I think this, this council's new and we can redesign how we want to do that. We have not gone that route in the past and maybe this is the time to be doing it with that.
I will jump in if I may and say that part of working with council is to make sure that any planning is realistic. I mean, how much can we do in five years or three years? You know, what makes sense? I mean, if you look at the total price of 216 dollars, it's like 50 million. And, you know, it's just, we cannot fix everything, I don't think, realistically right at once. So working in terms of what our priorities are is definitely part of that communication.
Sorry, you mentioned, sorry, Member Russell?
We still have a Parks and Rec Geo Bond out there, correct? And when does that get paid off?
I'm fairly confident that it is paid off in 2023. And that frankly was passed in order to build Pirates Cove the first time. Just that we didn't have a mechanism for continuing capital investment and improve the valley center and set up the mix. So, but that will be, unless you wanted to continue that for some reason, that will be a reduction. I think it's 1, we're looking, it's, you know, like 1.9 mils, something like.
So in 2023, that amount of money would be available to pay towards parks or, I mean, I hate to do another bond issue if there's a way that we can come up with the money. If we have money in reserves and we're doing some of the projects now and then.
Yeah, I think the, the income from that bond issue is about a million a year, which is our debt service. So, you know, the citizens will not be burdened with paying off that debt, but there was no mechanism there for capital accumulation. So, I mean, it goes away, that, that is a, you know, sort of an expense to the citizens if you want to take it that way. But unless you wanted to reissue that bond and spend a million dollars a year on parks maintenance so that we don't find ourselves behind the eight ball, you know, that's an entirely different discussion. But I don't, you know, it's not going to generate any cash for us to.
Right, but it's, it's going to lessen the burden on the taxpayers if we waited a couple of years.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, there's a possibility of doing a combo of waiting or doing something now or that, or at least picturing it so that people know there's going to be some reduction at some point as well. But I am, I am really concerned about our maintenance plan for Parks and Rec. We have not done well. And you've come out more than others and that's in our new director press, we'll figure that out. So I'm glad this is all being shown to us at once.
So I want to confirm it is 2023 and the principal interest payment is 1.1 million.
It's 1.1 million.
Yes.
Do we know what the, what's the, what's the rate on that for homeowners too? And so much a part of our lives.
I did bring, we'll let Andrew look to see if it's provided in there.
Well, she's looking for that. We would have to go back to the photo. We would have to extend that.
And maybe as you, or did you mind?
So the, yes, the coupon payments right now are 4% coupons. So the interest rate probably was a little bit lower, but the actual interest rate that you're paying on the park is 4%. Which is about market, close to market rate right now, I would say, or common, the 4% coupon, your actual interest rate is probably going to be a lot less than.
So what does that look like for a homeowner?
For a homeowner?
Yeah.
So that's included, I mean, that's included in their, in their mill now. So I mean, whatever the active mill is, you would just take the proportion share of the 1.1 million. So.
Again, that's not a change in borrow.
Borrow. Okay.
Point of information.
Yeah.
How much did we originally borrow?
I don't see your question.
Oh, yeah.
How much did we originally borrow?
So the, the Series 2010 bonds, they refunded the original series, which I think were issued in 2001 or 2002. So the total par on that series was just short of 10 million dollars. I think it's around 5 million. There's about, how much is left on there? There is 3.5 million left on that series.
Thank you. So you'd like some direction from us?
What? So we included the planning timeline as it related to our stormwater projects. When do we expect to have future discussions regarding the water sewer system proposals? And also sprinkling in there the park and recreation projects and kind of what we're working towards. This is incredibly small, but it's included in your deck. We really just wanted to make sure that you knew what we were working towards as a staff for all of these integrated utilities and parks and rec projects and when we would be coming back, hopefully with decision points for you to make at future regular meetings. Again, I know it's small. I didn't expect to really necessarily go through this, but would really be interested in understanding your thoughts and next steps regarding the stormwater utility, fee rate increase, and then also approximate.
Member Anderson?
I guess, I don't know whether the council is on this. I know it's, there's a sense of urgency around storm rain issues, but I am really curious as to what the, the sanitary sewer and water studies are going to show. And I'm, I'm really hesitant to make a 30 million dollar decision before we get the information on that. And I know that that puts the timeline off. We have to raise these fees before we can, you know, prove that we have the funding to get the bonds and all of that. But that's just, it's, it's a real concern to me is that if we get, get that, go, let's go with the 30 million dollar bond and start moving that freight train in that direction and then we get these studies back and, and we got, oh, we need 20 million for sewer and 20 million for water. And at some point, we're going to just tap out what is possible to do. And so really having all that data, to me, is really important in dragging these decisions.
Number ten?
So unfortunately, we are where we are with some of these. So in terms of the stormwater, I, I don't want to delay it any further. Seeing that chart where some other municipalities kind of raised it under the raise in 2012 and we just kept staying low during that entire time as a period, we've just seen that. So unfortunately, I don't, you know, if we do get information back that sanitary sewer or water does need fixes, I don't think that they're mutually exclusive. I think we have to, I, I see where you're coming from in terms of just, at some point we're tapping out the residents, but yeah, I just, I just feel that. In terms of the stormwater, obviously to me, it's, like we've seen before with that. In terms of parks and rec, that was a little bit different for me. I'd like to see us start working a plan in terms of just shifting some of the undersized fund balance to capital improvement fund with the sole purpose of actually improving our parks. There's just, that would be my preference, obviously. If, if the citizens feel differently, then, you know, it is what it is. But that and, you know, I'll have to look at numbers, but also think about in terms of, you know, some of the students at, at the schools. If there's a higher proportion of the student population that are on reduced or free lunch, and I believe it's over half. I may be wrong about that, but it is. And so any type of increases is going to hit a lot of our population very hard. So to me, stormwater is a requirement or it's a priority. Parks and Rec would fall below that. We have other mechanisms to fix our parks, so that's my two cents.
Number Stone?
I just want to say I agree with members, or Mayor Mortens here on this. This is one of the biggest issues that I heard last year when talking to voters. And I even had some voters ask, what if it's going to cost us money? And it's an unpopular decision that you have to make. And I made a commitment to be a one-term city council member if that was necessary. So.
Member Anderson?
I'm, I'm wondering if there is a way to kind of split the difference here because I totally get it. Something needs to be done. I think our, you know, regardless, our rates on storm drain need to go up, if not just for maintenance or for doing a smaller data back. That's what I'm going to, I mean, that's, the one I'm concerned about is if we, if we commit to that path of we have to issue a bond now, we make that decision now, is there a way to just say, look, we need to raise these rates. We know we need to raise them at least this month much and to make sure we're going to meet our maintenance requirements and possibly a smaller project. And that'll also prepare us for issuing, issuing bonds if we decide to do that once we have all the data. In other words, can we kind of have our cake and eat it too here and start planning for that path without committing to it 100%?
No, revenue bonds, you have to commit to the projects.
Before you raise the rates?
Well, you can raise the rates.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes, you can raise the rates. We just cannot go out to, for bond issuance without identifying what projects we're going for. for.
So that's my question. Could we could we raise the rates to that first year, the 2021 level or whatever it was, in anticipation that we we want to issue those bonds? If if we get back the the water and sewer studies and it turns out that, okay, we can, those are those are more manageable, and then we can go ahead and issue bonds as needed for the storm drain. But say we get get some information back in a couple of months, like, no, we do have projects to do there. We need to, we need to think creatively about how we can dial back the storm drain project to make sure we're not, you know, we're not sitting at, you know, 200, 300, 400 million dollars instead in 15 years. That's my real concern is that we're going to keep coming, in five years, there's going to be another $100 million, you know, this $100 million problem is going to come up. And at some point, we're going to tap it out and we won't be able to go back and undo the things that we committed to before we had all the data in our hands. And it seems like two or three months is not too long to wait to gather all the information and not to say that we're not going to do something about this, but to make sure we really know what what we're up against. That's that's kind of what I'm hoping.
And I think in the information in your package, we did include, you know, an incremental on 2020, working towards, you know, an increase over the next several years. So I I think that 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 could work.
Definitely. Preparation for.
So I mean, we we discussed with Maria, I mean, you know, the city clearly has to do something to to start building reserves, to deal with papers and the paper projects, even for some of the the smaller ones. So you can always raise rates and then decide not to issue bonds if you go back up. But like Maria said, when when you go out to the market and you speak to investors and you and you go to issue debt, you are not guaranteeing, but you're projecting specific coverage. And in this case, it's 1.25 times coverage to run your debt service. So you have to have the rates to be able to do so.
Member Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to actually clarify something Mr. Anderson said.
Yeah.
Certainly.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Anderson, if my current understanding, and I I am 100%, of course, in favor of having as much of the information as we can before we make a decision, sensible. However, are you suggesting that we may get to a point in time, it should be have all of that information, where we may want to delay S or modify the S1, S2 plan? Is that what you're talking about? In favor of?
I I think, you know, I'd want to take everything into consideration or, you know, and and make sure that we're, that's like, we're not going to, yeah, I think that would that would be where I'm driving at. Is that the number one priority across all of our systems in the entire city? I think it would be helpful to have that data before we made that that decision.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, may I?
Yeah, keep going.
So with all of the meetings, we've had discussions during study sessions about the S's and all the details around options and timing, all the options. I don't see how we cannot do S1 and S2. I mean, I just don't, I think it's impossible to move forward without doing those. I I don't even see it as a question of discussion anymore. I think it's too little even, you know, the S3 we talked about, but that's my point of view of one of seven. And I also, to Mr. Anderson's, I'm saying this with perspective, of course, to your mention of the timing, one thing I do have in mind is, is the timeliness of this, the S projects, based on our our summer rain season and the urgency since 2018 that's been upon us, so staff has done plenty, even though there may still be some citizens who are clear on what's being done and feel it and nothing's being done. We've done tons so that we can make the right decision. But I, with all that I know, I I cannot in good faith delay any of that plan in favor of anything right now.
Can I respond?
Yeah. Let's go on, let's go on. Member Russell, then you'll come back.
Thank you, Mayor. I too am on board with moving forward with the rain increase for S1 and S2. And the truth is, once we increase the rates and the fees, it is an enterprise fund, it can't go for anything else. Once that is committed, it goes for stormwater drainage. And I, we have got to do this. We have been talking about it for a year and a half. And and I I know that we have some other things coming up. If you want to tie parks to this, I'm not okay with doing the parks and rec because I do believe we have other things far more pressing than our parks have been neglected. And I'm not saying that they haven't. But I'm saying we have undergrounds, infrastructure, water and sewer lines, and other things that have to be taken care of. And I I think that there are other funding mechanisms for the parks and rec. We're we're doing minimal, but I I think we just, I'm all for waiting at least a year on the parks and rec because I do believe, once we get closer to that bond maturing and that money is going to be freed up, it would be another opportunity. And by then, if we have other problems, we'll know what the real priority is. Thank you.
Member Stone.
You may not have the answer to this question. I don't really expect you to. But if we just hammered out approvals on everything that we're laying out here, what the fastest possible timeline would be for completing S1, S2?
In my packet from last week, I provided kind of a timeline. So I believe, if I recall correctly, that our timeline started construction in late, mid to late 2021 and completed by early 2023 for both S1 and S2.
Thank you.
Member Quest, I'm going to come back to you.
Joe raised a good one. There's definitely other things that could surface here that are considerable problems as well that are going to need our attention. I, the the timeline you presented last week came to mind for me, and I'm thinking of summers as well. How many rainy seasons do we have before completion? I'm thinking in terms of weather almost anymore. So I I do think that it would be really hard to procrastinate anymore on the S1 and S2. I think that we have a demonstrated problem, and I think that the citizens are anxious about it, that they really want to see that something getting done. I think that this is a, it's a pretty tremendous expense we're adding. It's going to certainly have some pinch for a lot of folks, but I think that they understand this one, so I can support it. I'm not as antsy on the the park ballot measure. Having said that, if citizens go forward with it and let's say it passes, then that's one more bomb that's out there. Then I wonder if, let's say, somebody does service infrastructure wise, rent is fatigue set in, and they go, I don't want to fix that, I think we just voted in the park. So the the park one is touchy to me. I I prefer not to do it and lean on our resources, see if there's other ways people about it. But the the point made by Member Anderson is not lost on me, that we could have other infrastructure needs. We know we have other infrastructure needs, and there could be some substantial services to come. Thank you.
Member Anderson.
Yeah, just to respond to that, I I get the that sense of urgency, and I feel it too, you know, and I think this infrastructure was is really important to me, and I know that storm drains are a big one. And that's why I think I think there's a path forward that doesn't particularly affect the timeline, allowing us to raise the, and correct me if I'm wrong here, this is what I thought I heard, we can go ahead and raise the rates in anticipation of issuing the bonds because that's what a six-month time period where we have to develop a track record of revenue that we're going to be able to pay those. And so all I guess, I guess the favor I would be asking of council, knowing that everybody, you know, probably most of you would go, yes, let's let's issue these bonds. Let's let's go ahead and talk about raising the rates and then hold off on locking in the bond if it's not going to affect the timeline. And maybe that's not even on the radar, I don't know. But until we get that other data in front of us and then have the whole discussion with all of the information at the same time, we can still move forward on the same timeline, but, you know, set a set a date when we get that information in to have a big, big picture discussion with the water and sewer data for us too.
Mayor Lewis.
Yes, I just wanted to mention in response to the question from Councilmember Anderson, and I verified this with the Director Deandrea, and I know this has been a sobering night. And so through a lot of big decisions, I would submit these are probably the most important decisions that you will make in your time on council. That may be a little hyperbolic. But I will tell you that we already know from the preliminary master planning work that we've done on water and wastewater, those needs are greater individually than what the needs in stormwater. So we're looking at significant increases in both water and wastewater.
Do you have any guess of that?
We haven't put final numbers to it yet, so I think the timeline for that is about April. We'll probably see a draft with total final numbers probably towards the end of February. These are just the preliminary numbers that we're seeing based on their assessments so far. Is in that range around more or greater than what we've seen in stormwater?
Yes, go on, Mark. I kind of, I kind of like, we did ask one more question if y'all don't mind. When do we have to start the process for the the bond of this? We have this six-month window to prove things, but do we start to go to market right now because we're trying to get in? Timing is always critical on this.
So right now, the way that we have the cash was projected, not in the slide.
Yeah.
The slides that are out, tell us prepared. We we basically assumed a spend out of a $3 million loan that the city already provided to the enterprise and then closing one or two months prior to the full spend out of that. And so we we anticipate closing in, I want to say, March or April of 2021. And so we can accelerate that if need be, but that gives the city flexibility and time to evaluate all its other capital expenditure needs. And then it also gives it the, you know, the appropriate timing to show, to show historic revenues, especially when you're going to the bond market, that the the more historic revenues, the more stability that we can show increases the the rating that it will get from the rating agencies, which helps reduce the interest rates.
So really, what Councilmember Anderson's asking for, we're going to be doing anyway.
Correct. And so, right, and so, fair enough. And so we could kind of discuss.
It makes me very nervous not to move forward and claim this piece. I don't, we can not do this, I don't, I don't think, unless you're telling me we can we can do something different on this wall here, save us some money. To me, it was pretty clear last week, but we didn't really talk about it. We had to do it. And it's, and unfortunately, it's not going to matter what the next thing is, which is really sad. And then if we hit a recession, I mean, you all have to remember, they were with you this awful thing in the mid 2000s where we had to really figure out a lot of stuff, then that's probably going to come our way as well. Scary. I don't know which one was first, Member Stone maybe, and then Member Quest on.
Just for the sake of clarity, since it is getting kind of late, this would not delay the timeline at all by going with what Member Anderson is suggesting. Because right now, what I'm looking at is construction finishing on S2 in about February of 2022. And I don't actually know that we have a estimated date on the chart that I was able to find from last week, I think it was for the completion of S1. And it goes all the way through 2022 and all the way to the end. So I don't know if it goes into 2023 there or ends at the end of 2022. It does end at the end of 2022. So I just want to make sure that not, you know, that we're not extending that timeline in any way, shape, or form because it is still two years from now before these projects will be completed. So we've got two full, you know, flood seasons.
Well, every month we don't do it, it prolongs it, right?
Yes, and I want to just comment on Andrew's thoughts around the $3 million loan. I just want to make sure everyone's clear, that is a loan that was given from the long-term asset reserve to the enterprise. And so we're starting to use those funds, we're going to come forward, I believe, next week with a request, one of the first requests to utilize those funds to to council. Those were the funds that Andrew was referring to, that we needed to actually increase our fees and rates within the enterprise to actually pay that loan back. But it's an internal, just wanted to be clear about that.
And it's not the 9 million that Councilmember Anderson was referring to with our.
No.
It's important to keep that clear. All right, I think maybe Member Quest on and Mayor Portman in the background.
Thank you. City Manager Lewis, when you mentioned it's greater in value, what you're anticipating, you mean in terms of expense, not necessarily importance or relevance, that's that's another matter?
That's correct, greater expense.
Thank you.
Always, it could be different. Member Portman.
So I actually get to piggyback off of that. So greater expense, that we, obviously, we'll talk about it when we get to that portion later in months. But are we talking about total value or are we talking about the actual impact to the homeowner and resident of the city?
I think just at this point, total dollars.
Total dollars, right. So just depending, since we're talking about, you know. Well, anyway, and then second question, I think the the aspect of what Councilmember Anderson, I was about to say Jefferson, but, but no, so it was, so I guess the really, the only alternative is to look at a 10-year. We haven't really been talking about a 10-year. We've been talking about a 25, so we may need more Tate if we're going to be talking about 10-year. So, and I think we kind of weren't agreed, well, new council, but I think we were, at least me personally, still in favor of a 25.
Member Anderson.
I think it sounds like, I guess what I'm driving at is I think all of these are can't not do things at some point. But also, at some point, we're going into a financial wall. And so there's going to come a time where we're going to say, we really need to do this, but we're not a $500 million city. We don't, we can't raise that kind of revenue from the kind of tax base that we have. And so I just want to say, if we're going to, if we're going to say no to something at some point, that we have everything in front of us before we decide which piece that is, that's that's my whole, that's what I'm driving at.
Member Russell.
So because of us having to establish, you know, increase the rates to establish a reserve fund, is the city not in really great financial shape right now? Or or is it the, is it the enterprise fund that is the, is it the enterprise fund that needs to be in better financial shape for the bonds to be?
I don't think it's better financial shape is the magnitude of the infrastructure needs that are driving this discussion. Does that make sense?
And so, I guess, is it possible, I mean, I, we absolutely have got to do something and we need to do it soon. Is it possible that we do need to talk about scaling down a little bit and making certain that it's working?
So there's a reason, you know, because of the magnitude of the of the costs, the magnitude of the problem, you can see that again on the wall here, how much infrastructure we're talking about. And there's a reason why we've delayed or not ever done S1 and S2. They're the two most expensive, other than the Harvard Village project to the north, the ones that we need to tackle, the ones that, you know, affect the most properties upstream. So while we can talk about, you know, 10 versus 25 year, again, as I mentioned last week, our intent is to do as much as possible by by conveying water in the surface of the street and then minimizing whatever the infrastructure is. And we'll get into that into final, through final engineering. So my recommendation would still be is we move forward, we can even start that process. Now, I plan to start that process is to issue an RFP for that engineering consulting services to help us start to dig into those details. So while we can debate that 10 versus 20 years, about getting that maximum bang for our buck, so that whether, whatever size those pipes are, again, we get that maximum conveyance.
I appreciate, I appreciate that. And then also, when we do the water and sewer piece, I hope we're going to be looking at tap fees and things like that too, that will be paid for by the developers rather than by the property or the rate payers.
Absolutely. So we're about to start that process. We're going to be coming to you within the next, I believe, at the February 18 meeting to talk about the rate and fee study for water and sewer. And I think, just to caveat a little bit, you know, I think the magnitude of the problem or dollar-wise for water and sewer is. the magnitude of the problem, or dollar-wise for water and sewer, is similar. The question that we still have to figure out is what's the absolute, you know, how dire is the need at this time? So we can identify those needs through the master plan, but is that something that needs to be done tomorrow? Or is it something, you know, that we can delay or stretch over a longer period of time? That's still a piece, that's still a question.
Okay, thank you.
I, we have to do 25 year in my mind. We simply have to. I don't want to have in 20 years from now someone looking back at us and that we've done enough of that. And when you look around at the metro areas, who isn't doing 25? Nobody's not. We're all doing it. So if we're upstream or downstream, these also needs to be. Who's flowing into us and what are we doing? It's the same problem we have with Denver, we're waiting for them to do their thing. I don't want to be that person. And where we can do it for ourselves, we ought to be doing it. It's unfortunate that we're there, but I just think we have to do it. So I'd like to, I'd like to suggest tonight that we move forward with this as being planned. And the sewer stuff will be coming in within the timeframe that we're looking at anyway, getting exactly what you wanted. If we see something else, oh my gosh, you know, I don't know what that would be, but it seems like that's what we need to do. Anybody want to challenge that and say absolutely not? Because I'd like to move forward to the next item if you can. Okay, here's your direction.
Great, thank you for your input.
And thank you for all the work in the way we can look at all. Oh, we didn't talk about Parks and Rec.
Yeah.
Parks and Rec, we didn't talk about. So we got this part done, Parks and Rec. I'm really curious to look at a, like a five-year plan that takes a look at our unreserved fund balances and see, could we parcel this out? Could we do a big project each year, hoping that when we get to 2023? I mean, I think that's what we have to show the Friends of Inglewood Parks folks, be able to say, this is our plan. What would that look like? And then let them go to a bond. But they might, you know, they might default issue on anyway, so, and say, we can handle this. I don't know. Member Questa.
That sounds reasonable. I understand.
That sounds reasonable. City Manager, if you can keep us updated on the conversation we have to, I am curious what they're going to present. I just heard an initiative. I haven't heard specifics and all amounts, I haven't really helped organize or how strong an effort it is. So I think going out would be helpful, too.
And piggybacking, they can make sure that they're standardized at the same time so they know what the, know what we're going to be doing with some raising of some rates.
Okay, we can do that.
Because that will help.
I'll definitely keep you informed of those conversations.
Member Russell.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the other piece that we need to know is we have a huge capital projects list. And so it's generally planning and zoning that sets the priority, the capital project list for five years. Is that correct?
They work with City Council.
Yes. So, well, they make recommendations. That's what I mean. So are there other things on the capital project list that have been neglected for a long time that we don't? I mean, I think we need to prioritize what is the most important.
Member Weig.
Thank you, Mayor. Can someone confirm, is it only planning and zoning, or is it planning and zoning budget advisory and water steward board?
Water.
That handle these, the capital projects funding?
I don't think it's budget advisory.
They're involved.
I mean, they can be involved. We have a, in their charter, it doesn't say that that's a responsibility, but they certainly have come forward and told us what they think about our capital projects, which I think, let's be more proactive and have them involved with us. If we need to change something about their, who they are and what they do, I think I'm picking up on something that Manager Lewis has said, and maybe even our city attorney about past communities that they were doing where they outworked each other. I don't want to quibble over who was supposed to do what, but I certainly don't want us to leave out groups that could be really helpful.
And what value of their collaboration.
That said, planning and zoning is always affirmed or confirmed to the capital projects, but they haven't always been as engaged in the past. And I think this is, this last time around, Dorothy Harrow, we helped them get engaged this time, which I'm not, I don't know what it's like to her career, so I don't remember, but at least I know she engaged them. Member Questa.
Yes, Member Russell, do you need to review again the capital projects list in order potentially applying the unreserved fund balance? Putting it towards capital projects and those parts?
Yes. And it's not that we can't use it for parks, but that we would see where the greatest needs.
It would hurt to review the list. And I know it, you know, we're, every so often, but before we start, I think, try not to that idea. Thank you.
Senator Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor. Very quickly, we are trying to put together really the first comprehensive capital improvement plan. And so I've also tasked the Director of Finance with that, because we have had good, I think, capital planning in some departments, et cetera, but really giving you a clear picture of that. We're really trying to do that in a way that's consistent with other municipalities and how they approach capital planning. So I think by mid-year, we'll have a good picture of that.
And as we're moving into the budget season as well.
Member Russell, you like to run?
Yes, and I just, I'm not reccluding the Budget Advisory Committee. I think they have good information. The bottom line is that Charter says that planning and zoning will, and I don't know if it says the same about water and sewer board. So the ones that are named by Charter get the highest billing.
Yeah, I agree. But I really appreciate this kind of information coming out because if we are going to use unreserved balance, we need to decide where the different pieces go because parks can't, and I want to see parks go up though. So, all right, next item, last item, storm drains, nothing simple. Criteria manual on the alley paving standards update. So here's, Kim Lewis and who else is going to be here? We are getting stuff done. It's not just you one. Yes.
It's still the same, I guess, it's still the same.
It's not one. Manager Lewis assures me that we're not going nearly as long ago as councils, that's what I hear.
It's not encouraging.
Not in competition with others, no.
So we're, excuse my voice, I'm sorry to lose my voice a little, but here to talk about some things that'll hopefully save the city some money in the future rather than costing us money. A couple of policies for development, we think are important to adopt, and we have a generic code in our advantage criteria manual to help us mitigate some of the impacts we see from development. Al Bell is here with me to talk about, we'll talk about the alley, the storm drainage, drainage criteria manual. And I'll talk a little more about the proposed alley paving policy. We'd like to get your support for as we adopt our new engineering design and construction standards, as well as our storm advantage criteria manual. So we'll, I'll probably start with the storm drainage criteria and kind of the proposal we've come up with. We talked to you about four months ago about our, some of our thoughts, and now we're coming back to you with a little more detail. We've done some more research to try to come to a policy we think is fair and protects the city and is fair to the developers as well.
Member Weig, do you have a question to answer?
Thank you, it's really quick. I, I think it's Paul. Are you Paul Weller?
Well, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry to.
Okay, when we first started this analysis of our storm drainage criteria and what we wanted to see where it went, you know, currently, our standards are basically commercial properties over an acre are required to provide detention. Residential properties over two acres are required to provide detention. That's really not what we've seen develop over the last several years. So in order to be a little more proactive and a little more focused on what we actually see going on in the city is kind of guiding our recommendations. So in general, our recommendations is any projects that are a half acre or larger and disturb at 10,000 square feet are required to provide detention. And then anything smaller is from 5,000 to a half an acre. And projects that increase the imperviousness of a site by a factor of 1.5 need to reduce the runoff from their site to the predeveloped condition. So what we're seeing there is a lot of these townhouse projects, a lot of the duplexes and that kind of thing. They're very, they're small projects, but they're having a pretty impactful impact on the infrastructure. We're getting a lot more runoff. So sites that are, you know, a single-family house with a garage, you know, they're 40% impervious. When, you know, the developments come in, they're raising the impervious up to 80%. So there's a lot of, lot of concrete, lot of roof coverage on it. So that's generating a lot of runoff that's really not addressed anymore. So what we're trying to do is trying to see where we can cut that runoff back to, you know, no worse than existing. So try to, try to, you know, maintain the status quo so that, you know, the previous studies have been done. And, you know, some of the storms that were residing in place have a chance to work the way they're designed. We looked at a couple of criteria that have been done recently, both in Greenwood Village and the city of Littleton. I think it compares favorably with those. So is that, you getting now?
We've got comparisons, Reggie, to kind of show you what the impacts would be to the typical developments, so you can kind of see the size of the lot and how much imperviousness they add and what, how would it impact them, so you can get an idea of what the, what the impact would be and what we'd be asking for as far as the size of detention and that kind of thing for the typical lots. So if we can get that spreadsheet up there on the board there, is there, Sam?
Sam?
Yeah.
He's wanting the chart there, which is the typical development site runoff comparison. So I, no.
We, I don't know.
I don't know that we have it. We all have it in our.
Okay, all right, well, yeah, the typical site development runoff comparisons, there are several cells in the middle of the spreadsheet that are highlighted in yellow. And you see numbers, you know, 2.35, 2.0, 2.25. So that's the increase in the imperviousness that we're seeing for those projects. And the project is listed on the left-hand side, the number of units in the area of development. And then down towards the bottom of the sheet, and even on the second page, there are some, I call them trials. So I looked at different projects, sizes, different conditions, to see, you know, just kind of exactly where a change is going to occur. So that's basically how we came to that 1.5 times of the increase in the imperviousness.
I have a question.
Yes.
Okay, so turn the light on. So do you work with community development on this when they're putting the stuff together? Because I have been told that it's not that much for these things to be built and taking up, and impervious and impervious. That's not what we've been told.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, please?
Some of the development that we've done, we've been told has very little impact on runoff. In the past, that doing a townhome to, not since you've been there, to what extent is community development and zoning coming up with some planning that, will this then go forward with them? Have you talked with them about this? I mean, 1.1% isn't very much, and I think that's what some people have said, well, it's not that much, but over accumulation.
I think when you look, look at the, you know, the areas that are zoned for these developments, when you start adding all those together, I think you're going to start to see an impact. And that's what we're trying to mitigate.
Do you think we're getting ahead of it, or do you think we've already?
I, I'm afraid that we're maybe a little behind.
Thank you. It's all. Member Russell and Mayor Portman.
Thank you. So I guess what I'm asking, because these are small lots that you're talking about, and the Kmart lot, we just allowed them to not do anything. So, and I mean, in your chart, you're talking about townhomes. So let's talk about the Broadway corridor. Maybe there are a lot of things in there that could change ownership. Let's say like car lots, some of the used car lots. And it sells, and it's probably maybe just a half acre or a little bit more. And they wanted to come in there and follow these drainage criteria. It would take a huge portion of that half acre lot, either that or they would have to do underground detention. And if they do underground detention for a small business, I spoke with someone that said they got an estimate for a 3,500 square foot building, that it would cost them $87,000 for detention. So if we're charging that much for these small lots, how are we going to attract businesses that size that will do the highest and best use? I understand if those car lots are going to be sold and there is, you know, high-density housing built on there, that is going to create more of a drainage problem. But are we not doing ourselves a favor by doing lots that small, a half acre?
You know, a lot of the lots on Broadway, they are smaller than a half acre. I believe one of these, looks like it's the bottom development on the first page, where it's a commercial site, it's, they're adding a 1,600 square foot building. The lot size is only 5,600 square feet. So a lot of these lots are not a half acre. We have, in fact, we only have 600 lots that are bigger than a half acre currently now. So to get a lot bigger than a half acre, you'd be looking at doing a lot of combination. And in a lot of combination, you know, I haven't, I haven't seen that happen. And so for those lots that are less than a half an acre, increasing imperviousness by 1.5 times, then there is a detention requirement. But if they're taking a car lot that's virtually paved now, they're not going to be increasing the imperviousness barely. In fact, probably some of the landscaping things may actually cut that back down. And we'll see the reduction in the runoff just as the natural development.
So then to the mayor's question, what about, I mean, working with community development, could community development be telling people that you, what if someone wanted to just replace the footprint of the building that was there, and the rest of it was parking lot? And it probably is, is between a half acre and an acre. And the rest of it was parking lot, would they be required to build detention?
I think what our criteria is looking, looking at is if there's over 10,000 square feet of disturbance over a half an acre. So that's a, that's a fairly large, large build. So if they're just doing a small addition or, you know, a changing of kind of a layout or something, and they're keeping the site generally the way it was, it's probably not going to hit that threshold.
Okay. So you could script the building and build in the same footprint?
I, I think there are, there are scenarios where that could apply use.
Okay, and would they come to you or us? Okay, thank you.
Let the manager speak up at this point.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I do want to point out, you're exactly on the right track in terms of really, we have to balance the needs of wanting to be economically vibrant and attractive business, but also realizing that, just like the last issue that we looked at, the cumulative effects of runoff cost tens of millions of dollars, you know, for the city. And so I think what we've tried to do is really find the sweet spot. One thing that I think is unique in Inglewood is that most of our commercial and industrial areas are almost 100% impervious. That's just me looking at a map and driving around, because we didn't have landscape standards for many years here. You know, most of those lots where they could, they would just pave it over because it was cheaper than, you know, trying to maintain a plot of landscaping, et cetera. And so if someone comes back in, has to put in some landscape strips, you know, and has opportunities, assuming they don't need every square inch paved like most of our spots are now, they can actually not always have a net increase, or possibly have a net decrease in the total impervious surface. And so I think we built in some allowances for that. And I think that was really the case with Kmart, too, was that they did not have a net increase, and the developer didn't have a net increase. was that they, they did not have a net increase, and the developer didn't have a net increase. And so our variance process let them, you know, proceed without having to detain. Is that correct, Paul?
Well, the, the, the variance process allowed them to provide less detention than they would have normally. They are, by the way the code is written now, it was a PUD. So by the PUD, they were required to provide detention. And the variance that they requested was to reduce the amount that they provided.
Wait a minute, information. Can, what happens if they decide at some point to build high-density or mixed-use on the property? Will they have to come back to address the drainage issue?
Yes, because it's, it's, I want to say project specific.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Portem?
And in that case?
In that case, it would be a brand-new PUD as well, so.
Yeah.
So when I was reading through this information, actually, I thought the same thing. It was a check on community development, which is something that I want to see in terms of the department's work to do. Obviously, you've seen it from a different perspective than community development is, and I was happy to see that type of information here. I have a question, just because I did miss the last session, and I, I think the last session was back in September. So I had a question about when we do request, and I sent an email to you, Mr. Hoos, about it, was just in terms of the alley pavement, where we do require a development, a developer to pave a sort of, a certain portion of the alley. Does that affect how the city maintains the rest of the alley if it's unpaid?
Well, for that, what we have to do is we design the pavement to match the rest of the alley's underlying profile, so the pavement will match into the existing dirt. So it's, obviously we won't have to maintain the concrete piece, but the rest of the dirt will blend in and be a consistent surface there. So we won't have, you know, high spots and different elevations for each piece. So it reduces the amount of, of, maybe you have to do, you know, you still have to grade it, you know, what the dirt is. But the concrete piece, we, we won't have to do nearly as much with that as we, the long-term solution that doesn't require as much maintenance.
Right, and this might be, just going to ask the question just because it's just hitting me at this late hour, but would it ever happen where we're only paving the middle of the alley, but there's still dirt on the ends? I'm not sure if that would happen, but figured I would ask.
Yeah, it could happen. You know, we have some, I think now that have done that, the single lot has paved their piece. And we have the ends, there's still dirt, and it's still, it's, you know, similarly, you know, you go from the sidewalk to the new concrete, you maintain that section of dirt there. Then you go to the other side of the new concrete, maintain the, to the other avenue there.
So there's no issue with the city maintaining the unpaid portion?
As long, as long as we maintain the profile, make sure it matches in, it's pretty seamless, it works pretty well.
Thank you.
We're going to, Director Deander, did you want to add anything? Am I coming up?
No, given the late as of the hour, I'll, I'll pass.
Okay, I did want to correct myself. When I, my brain got kind of stuck on this one common open here building and realized I was talking about duplexes in my mind, that we, that doesn't necessarily have the same impact as a building of six to 10 or 12. It takes up lots of, so I, I think, anyway. Go ahead, Member Russell.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, Mayor Portem brings up a really good point about paving the alleys. And just in the last, maybe three weeks, I've gone out and walked a couple of alleys where people have had complaints. And I was talking to this one longtime resident, and he said that the Public Works Department, over the years, I mean, say since 1950, when we first built the alleys, was, kept adding dirt to the alleys, and the dirt level in the alley is getting higher. And so there were several areas where I have seen fences under dirt. Like this one guy had a, well, there's a couple gates that I saw, where the dirt level in the alley was very higher than the gate, so they can't get their gates open to get out of the yard. So if we're going to require paving to be done, we have got to address the dirt level in the alley, or we're going to have a major problem.
Member Wink.
So to our crew, our team, isn't grading the alley before paving, this permanent paving is not part of the process? Or is it part of the process?
Yes, go ahead.
And it is part of the development process. Yes, grading the alley is, is part of the process and also the design. We're also asking the developers to give us a design of the alley to make sure it fits with the existing accesses that are along the alley.
I, I like, I think we should go forward with this. I don't know if anybody has problems specific to anybody. I'm really thankful you decided to do this. That's exactly what we need to do, to move forward. And I've heard since Director Deander's been here, every little bit does make a difference, even though Caliber sort of did that one night, and I think we disagreed with them there. Like, no, it doesn't matter. So I, I like that we're moving in this direction. Anybody want to challenge that and say, want to go a different direction? So this comes forward to us in some form of an ordinance, so. Okay. Thank you for the hard work on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Strice, anybody have anything? We'll just go with whoever wants anything. Put your light on, and we'll go with it, otherwise, I won't call it. Member Anderson?
I just wanted to follow up on one thing from a discussion.
Okay.
We had talked about both of these, I think, CB4 and CB47 coming back same time for the next meeting. Can we have CB4 come first, approve the regulations before? That's what I really want to see, so I just want to get that on the.
Here's no issue with that.
Okay.
There's no issue with that, that just Director Mayor and City Manager, if they're meeting tomorrow, that you'd like to see that come first. I heard that early tonight, so that's my confirmation.
That's all I have?
Anything else? Mayor Portem?
No, this is just quick. I just want to thank council for their effort, their attention tonight. Had very productive meetings both times, so I just want to thank everybody.
Member Stone?
Yeah, I actually do have a couple of requests around STRs, and that's if we could get projected revenue of licensing and of taxes, and then projected cost of enforcement under the existing prohibition and then under the new regulations. So we can just kind of take that into consideration, if it's possible. I mean, I'm sure this could be difficult. And then, I, I'll save it for next time.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. My, I just want to, I'm asking the manager to, or the, yeah, the city manager to send out the ADU conference that's here on Wednesday morning. Even if you can come for 8 o'clock to 9 o'clock or something early, just a couple hours, that's all I can do on Wednesday. It might be very helpful. But there's also a book that goes along with the speaker that's going to be here, that if you're interested in it, we can, we purchased already a copy of it, it'll be useful, too. And I think that's it for me. I have a number of other things I'll do Monday night if there's time. I really want you to see the Dr. Cog video that I presented a few weeks ago. It's not, you know, urgent. City manager?
I just want to thank everybody for the incredible amount of time you've been spending. I know you have worked very hard, and I also want to just acknowledge that and everybody else in the room, that Maria and Maria have both done yeoman's work on the rate and fee analysis and all the work in the capital, examining capital needs. And again, I know it's going to be a lot of hard meetings coming up, but I just really appreciate the way in which you all are approaching us.
Thank you. City attorney?
No report.
All right, we're adjourned. Go frolic.